Switching roles.
Good evening, everyone. The mayor is wrapping up a couple items from closed session. He'll be here any minute and then we'll get started. Sorry for the delay.
And at this point, I want to adjourn the special meeting at 6:22 PM and want to call to order the Elk Grove City Council regular meeting on Wednesday, March 11th at 6:23 PM. And Mr. Clerk, if you could read the Metro replay schedule.
And just to hop in, Mayor, sorry Brenda, it's Madam Clerk this evening, Assistant City Clerk Brenda Haggard is doing some cross-training and she will be for the month of March and into April and so I'll be handing over the helm to Brenda.
Awesome, Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mayor. This meeting of the Elk Grove City Council will be replayed on Metro Cable Channel 14 on Friday, March 13th at 1:00 PM and Monday, March 16th at 6:00 PM. It is being closed captioned and will be webcast at SacMetroCable.TV. City Council meeting videos are also archived on the city's website at ElkGroveCity.org. For members of the audience who may have personal electronic devices, please place them on silent mode during the meeting. Thank you.
Okay, real call please.
All right, sorry. Councilmember Nguyen?
Here.
Councilmember Hume?
Here.
Councilmember Soon?
Here.
Vice Mayor Detrick?
Here.
And Mayor Lee?
I am here. Next item.
And Pledge of Allegiance?
All right, 1.2. Chief, would you lead us in the pledge, please?
Hand over our pleas.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Takes us to Section 3, Closed Session. There are no closed session items on the regular agenda.
I think we're getting a little bit ahead. Let's, 1.3. At the beginning of every city council meeting, we like to have a moment of silence if you could join the city council in that. But before we jump right into that, I want to take this opportunity to pause and remember those that during this difficult time have lost family members to this COVID-19 virus they've been hearing about. Just yesterday, I've heard that we have an ElkGrovian that have succumbed to this virus and a little bit later, there will be a message that will be posted on the city website addressing some of the steps and measures in which we are taking. I'm real proud that our Public Safety Office, being the police department, is taking the lead in this and they are regularly communicating with the county health office and also with our
Good evening, everyone. The mayor is wrapping up a couple items from closed session. He'll be here any minute and then we'll get started. Sorry for the delay.
Evening, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you for joining the City Council in our regularly scheduled meeting. At this point, we want to adjourn from closed session and to report. By vote of five zero, the City Council authorized the City Attorney's Office to defend the case of Rackley versus City of Elk Grove Sacramento Superior Court Case Number three four dash two zero two zero dash zero zero two seven four six four five. And at this point, I want to adjourn the special meeting at six twenty-two P. M. And I want to call to order the Elk Grove City Council regular meeting on Wednesday, March the eleventh at six twenty-three P. M. And Mr. Clerk, if you could read the Metro replay schedule.
And just to hop in, Mayor, sorry, Brenda. It's Madam Clerk this evening, Brenda, Assistant City Clerk, Brenda Haggard is doing some cross-training and she will be for the month of March and into April. And so I'll be handing over the helm to Brenda.
Awesome, Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mayor. This meeting of the Elk Grove City Council will be replayed on Metro Cable Channel fourteen on Friday, March thirteenth at one P. M. and Monday, March sixteenth at six P. M. It is being closed captioned and will be webcast at Sac Metro Cable dot T. V. City Council meeting videos are also archived on the city's website at Elk Grove City dot org. For members of the audience who may have personal electronic devices, please place them on silent mode during the meeting. Thank you.
Okay, real call, please.
All right, sorry. Councilmember Nguyen? Councilmember Hume? Councilmember Sun?
Here.
Vice Mayor Detrick?
Here.
And Mayor Lee?
I am here. Next item.
And Pledge of Allegiance?
All right, one point two. Chief, would you lead us in pledge, please?
Hand over our pleas. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Takes us to section three, closed session. There are no closed session items on the regular agenda.
Nope, I think we're getting a little bit ahead. Let's, one point three. At the beginning of every City Council meeting, we like to have a moment of silence. If you could join the City Council in that, but before we jump right into that, I want to take this opportunity to pause and remember those that during this difficult time have lost family members to this COVID nineteen virus they've been hearing about. Just yesterday, I've heard that we have an Elk Grovean that have succumbed to this virus and a little bit later, there will be a message that will be posted on the city website addressing some of the steps and measures in which we are taking. I'm real proud that our Public Safety Office, being the police department, is taking the lead in this and they are regularly communicating with the County Health Office and also with our local fire departments to coordinate steps and measures in which we are taking here in Elk Grove. So please stay tuned for that. But if you could, as we pause for a moment of silence, if you could remember and reflect on things that perhaps maybe we can do, but certainly to support the families that have lost someone during this global crisis. Thank you. Okay, thank you very much. Item two, we have an agenda in front of me. Is there a motion?
So move.
Got a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, pose, abstention. All right, next item, item three.
Closed session. There are no closed session items on the regular agenda.
All right, let's go to the next item, item four.
Section four, Presentations and Announcements. Item four point one, Proclamation Recognizing March as Women's History Month.
Okay, do we have former Mayor Sophia Sherman here? Come on up, ma'am, and we've asked the only woman on the council to, for the honors of presenting this to you, ma'am.
On behalf of all of us here at the Elk Grove City Council, we'd like to present this recognition to you for Women's History Month. Now, I specifically, not only did I want to do this because I'm the only woman on that council, but to me, it is so important that I was able to be here to give this to you because you were the first women to serve on the Elk Grove City Council, first woman mayor on the Elk Grove City Council, but also in addition to that, you have been championing our veterans community in the Veterans Parade and you championed the Veterans Hall here, finally a home for our veterans. As one of the true leaders here in the City of Elk Grove, you are definitely a role model for all of us, for me, for all of the women here, and I am proud to be able to offer this to you on behalf of the Elk Grove City Council. I'd like to invite my colleagues to come down and join me because we want to honor you, recognize you, and also thank you for paving the way and making it possible for other women to serve in this leadership capacity. So, are you giving hugs or are you giving?
I'm giving hugs.
Okay.
Nice to be here, actually.
How are you?
Why gives it tight hugs?
Save the best for last. Congratulations.
Hey, if I remember how to do this, we do this, right?
Above the boot, right?
Do you like to say something?
I would love to.
Thank you, Sophia.
Thank you.
Are they both, yeah, they are. This is such a pleasure. You have no idea what it really means to the women that we recognize every year. Women's History Month is really important to them. I think there are many of us, you know, that we just charge forward and we just take charge and there are others that keep kind of quiet, they don't say too much, but they are really working behind the scenes and they never get recognized. And I think with the City Council doing this on an annual basis, I truly believe that it shows that you do care what the women in our community have accomplished and will continue to accomplish. The journey ahead of us is very difficult in many ways, but with the City Council that we've had in the past and those that are coming after you sometime, I don't know when, but there'll be some. It is, it shows that the legacy that these women are leaving for our city is something to be desired by other cities. And I just want to say thank you very much from the bottom of my heart and on behalf of the women that are not here, I am their voice this evening. Thank you so very, very much.
Sophia?
Thank you, Sophia.
Sophia, so not only were you the first woman mayor, you are the only woman mayor we've ever had.
True, until we got Stephanie.
Coming soon.
Great, thank you so very much, young lady.
Thank you, Sophia. Awesome, thank you. All right, let's move to the next item.
And that takes us on to section five, public comment. Members of the audience may comment on any item, not on the agenda, that is of interest to the public and within the subject matter jurisdiction of the City Council. Each person will be allowed three minutes or less if a large number of requests are received on a particular subject. The City Council cannot take action on non-agendized items raised under public comment until the matter has been specifically included on an agenda as an action item. Members of the public desiring a response to a specific question are encouraged to contact any member of the council or the city manager at any time. Those audience members who wish to address a specific agendized item are encouraged to offer their public comments during consideration of that item.
Okay, thank you. As a general reminder, I like to always remind members of the public that we appreciate as a council, we, in order for us to do our job, we do appreciate your input. And what is critically important is that we allow ample time for everyone to express their concerns and raise some issues that if any one of us should desire to, we can direct staff to address it. But bear in mind, each of you have three minutes and after two minutes, you have one more minute to summarize it. You'll see that the timer will change color and, you know, I don't mean to be rude, but when your three-minute expired, I will interrupt you out of respect for the members of the public that are here who would like to speak as well. Bearing that in mind, let's start with our first speaker, Melinda Robinson. Come on up, please. And then Josh Bronco.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, and council members. I am here again to register my objection to CNU's proposed medical facility. It's no secret that we have a growing community of Elk Groveans that also oppose this project. Over the last few weeks, CNU, in conjunction with our council members, conducted an outreach meeting across Elk Grove. Thank you for that. This was something that was desperately needed in order to allow our citizens the opportunity to ask questions and bring our concerns to CNU. Unfortunately, the general consensus is that these meetings were not particularly fruitful. The audience felt belittled, dismissed, lied to, and left without answers. I'm sure that the impression can be, well, you wanted an outreach, we gave it to you enough said. However, one could also argue that awareness of these meetings, the public notice, was severely lacking. I personally believe that in order to conduct a true outreach to Elk Grove, the publication of these meetings should have been in the same manner as a publication announcing this project. Where was the media, the press release, the full-page ad in the paper? I don't mean to sound ungrateful, but let's be fair. What was offered by CNU is nothing more than a check-the-box obligation versus a legitimate, well-publicized forum to address the community's concerns. I don't need to list the reasons for the opposition to this project. You all know what they are and sadly, we still do not have answers. And not surprising, CNU has continued to display overtly smug disrespect to the citizens, your citizens, the people who elected you. We may have started out as a not-in-my-backyard issue, but this has led to serious concern not only of the viability of this project, but the honor and ethics of those behind it and supporting it. What kind of message are you sending to your constituents? Mr. Mayor, our hospital in Elk Grove was part of your campaign message. We thank you for that and I'm extremely pleased to know that we will have one from dignity. What CNU has done, the character they have shown, the questions that have been raised and have yet to be answered are disturbing. Your alliance with CNU could most certainly affect your reputation and your political career and I'd be very concerned about hitching my horse up to that organization. I thank you for your time and I continue to employ you to do the right thing in this regard. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Our next speaker is Josh Bronco. Following Josh Bronco is Barbara Patterson.
Good evening, Mayor Lee, members of the council. I'm Josh Bronco, management analyst for the Consumerless Community Services District. I'm here to announce we are currently accepting applications for our new Landscape and Lighting District's Advisory Committee. Volunteer advisory committees are an integral part of local government. They offer residents a forum to make recommendations to staff and elected officials. They increase communication between local government and the public. They encourage residents to become neighborhood leaders and community advocates. The L and L Advisory Committee will make recommendations on budgets, projects, and planning. Members will provide updates to staff on their district at each committee meeting and furthermore, they will assist with outreach efforts and volunteer events. Members will have an opportunity to take part in local government. They will meet like-minded people and receive training on landscape maintenance. Applications are due by Wednesday, March twenty-fifth, and residents could submit their application at any Consumer CSD office or they can also email to myself directly, joshbronco@csd parks dot com. Our Board of Directors will select the committee on Wednesday, April fifteenth. The board will appoint members based on their knowledge, experience, and public service. We will also consider the composition of the committee as our goal is to select members that truly represent Elk Grove's diverse community. I encourage the public to visit yourcsd dot com slash L L D A C to find more information. There residents can download the committee handbook and application. That concludes my comment. I'm happy to answer any questions if there are any.
There are no questions. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right. Next speaker is Barbara Patterson. Following Barbara is Nicole York.
Good evening, I'm Barbara Patterson and I'm a resident of the Stone Lake community. Thank you for hearing us today. There will actually be three of us talking. The members of this council are our advocates and we need your help. There is a very fundamental information missing and would respectfully ask that rather than just taking CNU's word, we get hard numbers to back up this project. While there are many concerns regarding both CNU Hospital wet lab proposal and CNU's leadership, these questions are primarily focused on the project's inconsistencies and questionable facts and figures. Alvin Chung has repeatedly claimed that the project would result in twenty-four thousand new jobs and more than four billion in regional economic output, apparently based on a report by Varshney and Associates. This assertion has been used to garner project support, but we've seen nothing at all to back up these numbers. There is nothing on their website, nothing has been supplied to the public, nothing has, was offered in the AB nine hundred requests for expedited CEQA litigation. For perspective, Mercy Hospital San Juan, which is a level-two trauma center, only employs twenty-six hundred people. Sutter Health Regionally, which has an annual revenue of five point five billion dollars, still lists only sixteen thousand nine hundred employees. We would ask the council to do its due diligence in vigorously pursuing these statistics and make the backup for them available to the public. Otherwise, we are basing this project on hearsay statistics and promises. CNU's website currently lists the following for the project. Twenty twenty hospital construction to begin. Twenty twenty-two project completion. The Association of Hospital notes that the average length of time it takes for any hospital project is seven to ten years. Also, SMUD's response to the CNU proposal states, the SMUD portion of the work, excuse me, the SMUD portion of the work will take an estimated two years to design, construct, and commission, once the project entitlements, the E I R and CEQA reviews are secured. Should the CNU require service from two dedicated twelve cable feeders from, for the hospital and central plant, SMUD would require significant off-site work, including the substation work which would be billable to CNU. Environmental review probably won't be concluded until the end of twenty twenty, so there is no way that either of these two dates is remotely correct. And yet, CNU continues to repeat wrong information about how quickly the project could be completed. How can we trust any of the financial projections or timelines if, I just have one other sentence, if, if this is so wrong? We ask the council why these inaccuracies are allowed to continue and given this flagrant disregard for facts, how the council members find any of the rest of this proposal trustworthy?
Thank you, ma'am.
Sorry about going over.
Our next speaker is Nicole York. Following Nicole York is Daisy Hugh.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of council. I'm actually going to continue where Barbara left off because, you know, her time expired. So it's clear from city correspondence and the AB nine hundred submission that the CNU Hospital project is the first step of a much larger plan to develop wet labs and biofacilities. This brings up several questions, but I'll ask just two tonight. If CNU, if the CNU Hospital project fails, either financially because of poor planning or because after it's built, it's not actually approved to provide healthcare, how does the city plan to take responsibility for this partially developed monstrosity in our neighborhood? What is the reluctance to share the whole scope of the plan with the community from the beginning? Why would CNU be cagey about its goals, especially if the wet lab, bio lab facilities are actually part of their economic calculations? Nothing adds up. We ask council to do their due diligence, ask the hard questions, and dig into the actual facts and figures. So the HOA Board, I'm part of the HOA Board and we've come up with a formal position statement regarding the CNU project and I want to read that position statement to you. This represents all of our community, so I hope you listen carefully here. We are a safe, family-focused, neighbor-based community. Additionally, a substantial draw to living in Stone Lake is the natural beauty, critical migratory flyway, and spectacular bird life and open space to our south and to our west. Many of us feel genuinely responsible, responsibility to protect these resources. We have a right to expect and a responsibility to demand that our neighbor partners behave ethically and above board, are honest in their process, respect the concerns of our families, and support our values and the community we cherish. We should not accept anything less than a corporate neighbor who supports our priorities, engages in an open, transparent, and respectful manner, and is willing to work collaboratively towards a mutual shared vision that improves life for everyone for generations to come. Finally, given the rules and regulations surrounding trauma centers, we recognize that adding another level-two trauma center in the west side of Sacramento County, where the three other centers already exist, one just a few miles from Elk Grove, will virtually ensure that the families living in other areas of the county will not have access to commensurate healthcare options. This is unacceptable and out of line with our ethic. CNU project leadership has shown an ongoing and consistent pattern of disrespect for our community and our fundamental values. The project itself is wildly out of scope for the location and for the needs of the Elk Grove community. A healthcare facility closer to our Elk Grove community has benefits for both families and homeowners. A closer proximity hospital could provide better response times and patient care and can make family support less burdensome. A local hospital may provide a range of employment opportunities and could increase local priority, property values. However, we do not want to be lulled into a false choice. Gaining a local healthcare facility does not require us to sacrifice our quality of life or support a project which is clearly out of scale for our needs and out of touch with our community.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Our next speaker is Daisy Hugh. Following Daisy is Mark Graham.
Hello, I am also a resident of the Stone Lake community and I am speaking to you today as a parent. There are many challenges that I don't feel have been adequately addressed with regard to the CNU Hospital wet lab proposal. As a parent, I'm particularly concerned about the safety of our families as a result of putting a hospital buttoned up so closely to our homes and neighborhoods. Although a hospital receives patients from all over, unless patients are picked up by relatives or friends, they are discharged locally. The hospital is not responsible for returning patients to their place of origin. That means if a drug addict is brought into the hospital due to an overdose and no one comes to pick them up after they are treated, that patient is released into the community where the hospital is located, our community. If a gang member is the victim of gun violence and they are discharged without someone to take them elsewhere, they are released in our community. This is a real and urgent problem for all hospitals, but with this project, the challenge is made doubly difficult because there are large communities directly surrounding the proposed hospital east and south and another just to the north. And the west is the refuge. Our neighborhoods, our families are literally the buffer between the proposed CNU hospital and any other services. There is really nowhere else for dangerous or unsafe discharges to go. Slipping into these communities will be both desirable and pretty easy. So my- So, my question as a parent to the members of this council is this: What specific plans are being put into place to deal with the likelihood for increased vagrancy and homelessness and reduced family safety that will come along with this project? How can our communities continue to feel safe? And now, I'd like to use the rest of my time to talk as a member of NEST. You know that I have been very involved in my community and in addressing the CNU hospital project for the past year, and I can say that questions like this, as a parent, are going to come to you. These things are going to be basically left on your doorstep because you're the government, and people are looking for you to come up with the answers. So, what you need to choose is a hospital that is a true community partner, who can help with these types of questions, who can address the community, who can be transparent about the problems that hospitals can pose, and have a discussion about solutions. You need a hospital that engages with the community, that intends to serve the community where it's located, and CNU is not that hospital. And I and the other members of NEST will continue to tell you why this is not that hospital. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Last speaker is Mark Graham. Mr. Mark Graham, come on up, please.
Good evening, council members and staff. Mark Graham, Elk Grove. Thank you for keeping cell antennas away from residential front yards. You should amend the zoning code Title 23, Chapter 94.050 to say that each application for a cell antenna permit must demonstrate that the cell antenna will close a significant gap in coverage, and will do that using the least intrusive means. MetroPCS versus City and County of San Francisco, 2005. As soon as the U.S. Court of Appeals overturns FCC Order 18-133, you will be able to enforce that, but only if you put it in the zoning code. Council members, please say briefly what you think about this idea. Please direct your staff to briefly say what they think about this idea. I'm not asking for an extended discussion. Briefly say a few words, why wouldn't you do this? This is a glaring omission from your ordinance 19-2019, and it affects the city's regulatory power. Section 54954.2a, 3 of the Government Code, which is part of the Brown Act, says, "No action or discussion shall be undertaken on any item not appearing on the posted agenda, except that members of a legislative body or its staff may briefly respond to statements made or questions posed by persons exercising their public testimony rights under Section 54954.3." In addition, "On their own initiative or in response to questions posed by the public, a member of a legislative body or its staff may ask a question for clarification, make a brief announcement, or make a brief report on his or her own activities. Furthermore, a member of a legislative body or the body itself, subject to rules or procedures of the legislative body, may provide a reference to staff or other resources for factual information, request staff to report back to the body at a subsequent meeting concerning any matter, or take action to direct staff to place a matter of business on a future agenda." End of the quotation. That says that you can briefly answer questions and respond to comments from constituents or direct staff to do so, even if the subject is not on the agenda. Do you accept this? I'm asking the entire council. It seems from the January 22nd and February 12 meetings that you do not accept this. Councilmember Detrick, this sounds to me like you do not accept this. No other council member spoke up at either of those meetings, so it sounds like they don't accept it either. You are all in this together, acting as one. I heard you say, Councilmember Detrick, at both of those meetings, that because of the Brown Act, if a constituent asks a question or makes a comment on a subject that is not on the agenda, the council cannot briefly answer it or respond to it or direct staff to do so. Is that true? Is that what you believe? Please briefly answer my question that I asked about amending the zoning code at the beginning of my public comments tonight. Direct your staff to do so. Is this a good idea? Why or why not? You want to maximize local control. That's the way to do it. I am not asking for an extended discussion. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Graham. Appreciate it. Seeing that there are no additional speakers, let's move to the next item.
Takes us to Section 6, General Administration Information.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. A few items to report on. As Mayor noted, the city is actively engaged in regular communication with the county Public Health Department on how we, as an agency, can help to inform our community about the measures they can take to protect themselves against the spread of the COVID-19 virus. In accordance with guidelines issued by the CDC, the California Department of Public Health, as well as the County Department of Public Health, the city has decided to postpone two upcoming events in March. The first is Peace and Love, a musical review of the 60s. It was scheduled for March 20th. And the second is Energy Saving Expo. It was scheduled at the Community Center at District 56 on March 21st. We were hoping to find alternate dates later in the year to reschedule both of these events. On March 1st, our officers found out about a woman who is deaf and recently had her bicycle stolen. The woman lives alone and used her bike as her primary source of transportation to get necessities and to get to appointments. Officers learned that she was unable to replace her stolen bicycle and quickly jumped into action. With the assistance of the Elk Grove Police Officers Association, a brand-new bicycle was purchased and delivered to her. It was an emotional exchange, and she was very grateful. Big thanks to our Police Officers Association. Elk Grove Youth Commission and Sacramento County Board of Education are hosting a youth empowerment luncheon on Saturday, March 28th, from 10:00 to 2:00 p.m. at District 56. The event will give youth the opportunity to get information regarding Census 2020, youth voting, and a chance to meet their local government leaders. Pre-registration is required. Details and registration can be found on the city's website. The Fly Brave Foundation has collaborated with the Elk Grove Police Department. City of Elk Grove visions in motion and AMPed Fitness to offer a free eight-week fitness program to kids, teens, and adults with autism or other developmental disabilities and their families. The program will take place on Wednesday evenings from 6:00 to 7:00 p.m. and Saturday mornings from 9:30 to 10:30, starting on April 15th and ending June 6th at Albionni Middle School. Interested participants can register online. Visit the police department website for more details. And finally, Bruceville Road, which has been closed, has been closed from Bilby Road to Allen-Detrick Avenue to install underground utilities for new homes in the area. Motors are being detoured through the new housing development, and a truck road has been established along Whitelock and Promenade Parkways. The road is scheduled to reopen on March 23rd. And that concludes my report. I'm happy to answer any questions that the council might have.
Are there any questions? No questions? Nope? All right. Thank you, Mr. City Manager.
Takes us to Section 7, Council Comments.
All right. Let's go ahead and get started. Councilmember Wayne?
Thank you, sir. I had the honor to attend our newest Assistant Police Chief Bobby Davis's swearing-in, and I want to say that I had the opportunity to work with him for many years in the community, one through My Brother's Keeper, Boys Men in Color, but also through the Links to Law Enforcement Program. And I know he's standing back there. I am so pleased and happy to see him come to our city and be a part of this family. His community involvement, his ties to the entire region is exactly something that we needed here. I believe that both him and our wonderful Chief Albright here make a really dynamic team, and I am excited to see what the future brings. So, I do want to thank our chief here for bringing him on board because we needed somebody that complimented what our chief does here. He does everything really well, but I believe that Bobby, his ties to the region and what he's done in the greater community for, gosh, the last couple of decades and the last few years that I've worked with him has been just amazing. So, congratulations, and thank you for joining us here in our city. I attended the Strauss Festival. The theme this year was Alice in Wonderland. I brought my two little girls, as well as their friends, and they enjoy it every year. I know our Vice Mayor was there, as well as Councilmember Soon, and it was a fun-filled event. It was completely packed in that room. It was wonderful to see our community come out to support such a wonderful event, but also to see the little girls dressed in their tea outfits, their tea party outfits and their hats, and that group just puts on an amazing event. I mean, as you heard earlier, I had one of my info sessions with CNU, and I had about 30 community members. Many were from the NEST group that were there that asked questions. We did have Alan Warren, who many of you may know as not only the CEO of the New Phase Development Organization, but also a council member for the City of Sacramento. He facilitated questions and was able to answer and answer a lot of the questions, but also, I believe, was able to make a lot of the members there answer some of their questions as far as the process. So, I do want to thank him for being able to do that. And our Links to Law Enforcement graduation will happen next week, and I know I talked to our chief about this. We've been chasing after him for the last couple of sessions now so that he can come be an honored guest speaker, and I believe at our next session, he will be able to be the guest speaker because now that we have an assistant chief that can take over for the council meeting, he'll be able to attend. So, I'm holding him to that. That's all I have, sir.
Excellent. Councilmember Hume?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My report will be brief, as I didn't have many meetings that I attended. I apologize to Assistant Chief Davis. I was out of the country at the time of your swearing-in, or else I would have gladly been there. And I want to congratulate not only you on your new position, but also the chief on your decision. I've heard nothing but good things. I think you guys may have met at the barber shop, apparently, but sitting next to Councilmember Vice Mayor Detrick. But anyway, congratulations. Welcome aboard. Happy to have you. I wasn't able to make the RT meeting on Monday because I was in a meeting with Sacramento Mayor Steinberg, trying to hash out some details of the STA Sales Tax Measure Expenditure Plan, which will hopefully be voted upon tomorrow afternoon. The meeting's at 1:30 in the County Board of Supervisors chambers. We didn't have a sanitation board district meeting, and as I said, STA is tomorrow, and that's all I have to report. And I will say that, Mark, this is typically when council members will respond to items brought forward from the dais and ask for direction of staff or put a future agenda item on an agenda, and so I will give you the courtesy of a response, although you aren't going to like my answer, and you're going to disagree with me, and you're probably going to think I'm wrong, and that is that I simply don't place the same level of importance on what you're asking for that you do. And so, it's not that I disagree with any particular city protocol. I just, I don't see the need to bring what you're asking for forward, so.
Okay. Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Soon?
All right. Thank you, Mayor. Since we last met, I also had a CNU Town Hall, and I also want to offer my congratulations to Assistant Chief Davis. I, too, was out of the area in Washington, D.C. for work, so unfortunately unable to attend your swearing-in ceremony, and congratulate you, chief, on your choice. Look forward to sitting down with you and working with you in the community. Welcome. We also attended the Strauss Festival Tea, I was going to say Tea Ceremony, but having just, it's just tea. It's just tea. It was a nice event, and I really enjoyed the decorations. People put a lot of work into it, and it was beautiful. I think Vice Mayor Jan, Ms. Detrick, did a nice job on her table as well. Also, attended a 10-year anniversary for Elk Grove Laguna Forums with Councilmember Wayne and Vice Mayor Detrick, just to honor the 10 years of that media site informing the community. And spent a lot of time weekly on the Sacramento Transportation Authority effort. I want to, I think we're at a, I'm hopeful that we're at a good place to take a vote tomorrow, but I just want to acknowledge and thank Councilmember Hume involving, getting in his involvement. I think it was, you know, serving together here is an honor and always a great experience, but having the opportunity for the both of us to serve at a regional level and what I think, we made very good progress together, along with many others, but, you know, home team, so to speak. I look forward to tomorrow, successful event tomorrow, and I just want to thank you for that, for your work in this effort. Finally, SECOG Transportation Committee as well, but nothing significant to report out of that. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Vice Mayor Detrick.
Assistant Police Chief Bobby Davis, could you come on down to the podium so we can, one, get you on the film, so everybody at home can see what a good-looking man you are, with a good-looking haircut?
Yes.
What you may or may not know, the last three top executives that have been brought onto the city all have the same haircut, and I think it's beautiful myself.
Okay.
And, no, you.
That's for sure.
What's that?
It's easy. That's for sure.
Absolutely. So, for those folks who weren't there, I was very impressed with your comments that you had, your regional awareness, the time you took to investigate the city itself, and the emotion and passion you had from where you've been, where you are, and where you're going. And I wanted to give you a minute if you wanted to address the full council that's here, as well as everybody that's at home.
Well, thank you. I appreciate that. I was very emotional that day. I tend to wear my emotions right here on my sleeves and my shoulders, and that's because of where I come from and my compass, and really, it's about my parents and how they raised me, and that's kind of led me to where I am today, to be quite honest. Having this opportunity is truly a godsend, and it's a blessing, and not many people have this opportunity at this point in their lives or their careers. And I did a ton of research on Elk Grove, but before that, I'd worked here as a deputy with the Sheriff's Department, so I had a chance to be here when Elk Grove made the decision to go on their own. And so, from that point forward, anytime something happened here, I was pretty aware of what was going on because throughout my trajectory in my career, I had a chance to be a manager and move up, and you see things that are happening. And when you have an opportunity to look at a city like this and get a chance to be employed by that city, you take that opportunity. And while I was nervous to put in just the unknown, I jumped in with both feet, and the outcome from that difficult process is where I am right now. And I'm very, very proud to have had the courage to do it, but moreover, that I've had the chance to take the job. And when Chief Albright called me, I said yes before he finished asking, but in addition to that, the wave of emotion, and he knew, it came out of me, and it was a very emotional day, but it was a very proud day for me, and to be here is truly a blessing, and I can't thank everybody here enough, especially Chief Albright, for the opportunity and the belief that he has in me and the commitment that he's given to me. If anybody knows him, he knows he's a good communicator. He's transparent. He shares information. He has proven to be a very diverse man in his thought process, and everything, any decision that he makes clearly is thought out, and I think that that really bodes well for us as a city and for me as a man and as an employee working for him and the City of Elk Grove. So, thank you all very much, and thank you for the opportunity, and hopefully you enjoyed the ceremony, and I wasn't too emotional for you that day.
No, very much, because I think it's a testimony of the man that you are, and chief, you did an awesome job on bringing him on board and the feelings that you carried on and led into your presentation to everybody. So, my hats are off to both of you, because you guys both did a phenomenal job. You're both phenomenal public speakers, and I think our community's never been in better hands than with the two of you now at the helm of our police department. So, thank you both.
Well, thank you. I appreciate it very much. Thank you.
There's only one thing I would add, is, you know, this pattern of boldness has got to stop, you know? I'm feeling the pressure now.
You're already halfway there.
I'm getting close.
I think that it's, my brain is just pushing everything out, so it's, you know, really robust.
Kidding aside, you know, welcome. It was an honor meeting you, if I've heard a lot about you, and I think that what you had to say was really effective, and you brought the person in you, and I think oftentimes you forget that law enforcement officers are really human, that do care, and that's what I saw that afternoon.
Well, thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Mm-hmm. See anything else? Yeah.
So, just to, you know, mention a couple items that the, was it the Strauss Tea? They do a phenomenal event, and, you know, it's, all the events that they put on are kind of our hallmark events here in Elk Grove. Care, have you been there in the past? Care, have you been there in the past? Have you been to the tea in the past?
I've personally never been to the tea.
Need to get you and Riley there to the tea because I think you guys would really, really enjoy it. And Riley's at a great, great age for it. And any other fathers or mothers that have, you know, I'd say from five years old or older, it's a pretty special time for, for, and the amount, the amount of effort that goes in, each individual table is individually decorated. As was mentioned, the theme was based on Alice in Wonderland. And everybody came up with their own versions of what they wanted to bring forward. It's pretty phenomenal. I think there was thirty-six tables. So there was thirty-six totally different decors at each one of them. So it's pretty neat. And then I've got a couple other items as far as possible future agenda items. One, you know, I think it's been a while since we've had the norms and procedures brought back. I think that we could probably do some fine tuning on the norms and procedures. So if I have agreement from the rest of the council to bring the norms and procedures back? Okay?
Sure.
And then the second, this is kind of maybe piggybacking on something that the mayor's talked a lot about, is term limits. So I know there's been, never been any term limits on the council. John, what does it take to do that?
I believe it would take a vote of the people.
So we'd have to put it up on potentially as early as the next election. We have enough time for that, I believe, right? If it, if it was the will of the council.
I'm getting nods from the city clerk who's much more in tune with those timelines. If you want to have a discussion on that, bring it back. We can give you some of the details on how you go about doing that, if that's what the council wants to do.
I don't know if there's any appetite on the rest of the council. I mean, as I know, the mayor's really been big on not having lifetime seats or lifetime appointments. And the potential of bringing back, if we're going to do that, bring also back term limits for the council members and mayor as well.
Sure. I would support that, but I would go one step further. I think the city of Elk Grove reached a point where we really should be looking at political reform, particularly campaign contributions from entities within the city, outside of the city, independent expenditures. I would like staff to bring back an item in which we can discuss that as well.
I think independent expenditures have already been viewed at a federal level. I don't know if John could pipe in on that or not. That, that's a freedom of speech.
There are certainly free speech implications there. The Supreme Court has addressed that a little bit, particularly as it concerns corporations. But if you'd like to have a review of that and a discussion on that, we can do that. That's up to the council.
True.
Sure.
Yep.
That's three.
Yeah. Four.
Okay. Was there, was there consensus to bring back the term limit item?
Yeah, I think that was both, right? Is that correct?
Term limits? Yep.
The whole thing?
Yeah.
All right. Excellent.
That's it.
Okay. Let me see. As Councilmember Hugh had mentioned sanitation was counted this morning. I have GSAC tomorrow. The only thing that I wanted to add is I did participate in a briefing by the White House this morning with six thousand mayors across the nation on COVID-19. One thing that I did want to share with Jason, our city manager, is that there has been a lot, a number of resources that's been available, particularly block grants and some flexibility as to using that to address response to COVID-19. The general direction was go through the governor's office and have a conversation with them. And there are certain things that the governor can actually assist, the governor's office that is, can actually assist us in the event that we need to take drastic measures. So that was, you know, certainly helpful and reassuring along those lines. So once they forward me the summary of the briefing, I'll forward that to you so that you can follow up. Other than that, I have nothing else to add. Let's move to the next item.
Mayor, just one other thing on that.
Go ahead.
Jason, are we, what kind of regular communication are we providing to our residents about, about that?
So we've been sending information out through our social media channels. We created a city webpage specifically dedicated to information related to coronavirus. We're updating that daily because new information is coming out literally daily. And so as new information continues to evolve, we're continuing to push that information out and keep the information that we have available, so.
Do the press releases?
Press releases, social media, all of the various avenues that we have to get information out, typically social media. Because of how quickly things are changing, social media is the fastest way that we have to get information out. Also typically, things that would go through a typical press release would be things that would be covered more globally than just Elk Grove countywide or region-wide. And those are a lot of times are being disseminated by County Office of Public Health. Our information, our purpose is really trying to make sure we get information in the hands of our residents. And so, and our residents get information from a variety of different sources, including the typical local news stations and newspapers, but also through the various mediums that we use to communicate with our public. So we're trying to cast a pretty wide net in how we're communicating with the public.
Thank you.
Somebody just sent me a message that the NBA just suspended all their games based on the virus.
It was a player had tested positive for it. One of the players did. So they have suspended all NBA games.
All right. We're good. Next item.
Takes us to Section Eight Consent Calendar Items.
Okay. Want to open public comment. Seeing no members of the public sign up to speak, want to close public comment. Counselor Blitzen, end direction.
Motion.
Got a motion, sir? Second. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Pose. Substitution. Next item.
For public hearings, Section Nine, Item 9.1, we have five public hearings to consider. The first, the 50th Annexation to Community Facilities District Number 2003-2, Police Services. B, the 57th Annexation to Community Facilities District Number 2006-1, Maintenance Services. C, the 38th Annexation to Street Maintenance District Number 1, Zone 3, Eastern Area. D, the 18th Annexation to Street Maintenance District Number 1, Zone 5, Laguna Ridge. And E, the 31st Annexation to Stormwater Drainage Fee, Zone 2.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the council. I am Cara Taylor Seaman, Finance Analyst for the city. I'm here this evening with a presentation for the annexation, these annexations to the city's special tax districts. I've prepared a brief summary for tonight's proposed action. As kind of a recap and to review, you've seen this slide many times. The city maintains eight special districts. The requirements are specific to each based on the land use and the geography of the project. Annexations into the appropriate districts are typically a part of the approval process and are subject to annual rate adjustments. Tonight, there are three projects that are being proposed. These assessments will all be levied in perpetuity. The first is annexation into the CFD 2003-2, which is for public safety. The second is CFD 2006-1 for ongoing maintenance throughout the city. And then there's two street maintenance districts, one in Zone 3 and one in Zone 5, which I'll get to here shortly, as well as the final one, which is storm drain. There are three projects that are being proposed for annexation, and we'll have a slide on each one of them. So the first one is Sanabria Drywall. I've never have, I don't know if I'm pronouncing it right or not. It is a, what's that?
That's right.
That's right? Good. Thank you. It's a non-residential project, .69 acres. It's located, let's see, it's located just north of Grant Line on Bradshaw Road, sorry. And it is going into two districts. The CFD 2006-1 for Maintenance Services, as well as the Storm Drainage Fee, Zone 2. The second project is the Tankersley Parcel Map. This is a residential project with one single-family residential unit. It is located in East Elk Grove between Bond and Sheldon Roads, and it is being proposed into four districts. The first one being the Police Services, CFD 2003-2. The second is CFD 2006-1 Maintenance Services, and then Street Maintenance District 1, Zone 3, and Stormwater Drainage Fee, Zone 2. The final project for annexation is the Vineyard at Madeira, Pad E. It is also a non-residential project, .73 acres. It's being proposed into two districts, the Street Maintenance District 1, Zone 5, and Stormwater Drainage Fee. As a side note for this particular project, it's located within the boundaries of the original CFD 2005-1, Laguna Ridge. Because it was located within those original boundaries, annexation is not required at this time. And that concludes my presentation. I'm available for questions.
Any questions? No questions? Perfectly clear. Thank you, ma'am.
You're welcome.
Okay. At this point, I want to declare a public hearing open for CFD 2003-2. Open public comment. No members of the public sign up to speak. Want to close public comment. Declare public hearing, CFD 2002 closed.
Remove motion A1.
Second.
Got a motion? Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Pose. Substitution? All right. Tabulation, please.
Of one possible vote, one affirmative vote was cast, authorizing the city of Elk Grove to levy a special tax at the rate apportioned and described. The measure passes with more than two-thirds of all votes cast in the election in favor of the measure. The resolution declaring the results of the election is available for council consideration.
Move the resolution?
Got a motion for A2. Got a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Pose. Substitution? All right. Next motion.
Move to introduce and waive the full reading by substitution of title only in ordinance levying and apportioning the special tax and territory annexed to Community Facilities District Number 2003-2 Police Services, Annexation Number 50, and amending Elk Grove Municipal Code, Section 3.18.010.
Okay. Got a, got a motion?
Second.
There's a second. Then all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Pose. Substitution? All right. Second public hearing. Want to declare public hearing open for CFD 2006-1. Open for public comment. I do not see any members of the public sign up to speak. Want to close public comment and declare CFD 2006-1 closed.
Motion B1.
Got a motion?
Second.
There's a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Pose. Substitution? Tabulation, please.
Of two possible votes, two affirmative votes were cast, authorizing the city of Elk Grove to levy a special tax at the rate apportioned and described. The measure passes with more than two-thirds of all votes cast in the election in favor of the measure. The resolution declaring the results of the election is available for council consideration.
Motion B2.
Second.
Got a motion B2. Got a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Pose. Substitution? All right. Next motion.
Motion B3, introduce and waive the full reading by substitution of title only in ordinance levying and apportioning the special tax and territory annexed to Community Facilities District Number 2006-1 Maintenance Services, Annexation Number 57, and amending Elk Grove Municipal Code, Section 3.19.010.
Second.
Okay. Got a motion? Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Pose. Substitution? All right. Third public hearing, SMD Zone 3, Annex 38. Want to declare public hearing open. Want to open for public comment. I do not see any members of the public sign up to speak. Want to close public comment and declare the public hearing for SMD 3, Annex 38, closed. Madam Clerk, ballot tabulation, please.
There is no majority protest. Of one possible vote, weighted according to the proportional financial obligation for the property, one affirmative vote was returned. The ballot approves the proposed assessment and the proposed inflation adjustment limit described for the parcel identified in the ballot. A resolution determining to levy assessments in the district is available for council consideration.
Motion C.
Okay. Got motion C. Got a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Pose. Substitution? All right. Fourth public hearing. Declare public hearing open for SMD 5, Annex 18. Open. Open for public comment. There is no members of the public sign up to speak. Want to close public comment and declare public hearing for SMD 5, Annex 18, closed. Madam Clerk, ballot tabulation?
There is no majority protest. Of one possible vote, weighted according to the proportional financial obligation for the property, one affirmative vote was returned. The ballot approves the proposed assessment and the proposed inflation adjustment limit described for the parcel identified in the ballot. A resolution determining to levy assessments in the district is available for council consideration.
All right. Okay. Got a motion?
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Pose. Substitution? All right. Fifth public hearing. Want to declare public hearing open for SWD Annex 31. And want to open for public comment. Seeing that no members of the public have signed up to speak, want to close public comment and declare public hearing for SWDF Annex 31, closed. Madam Clerk, tabulation, please.
There is no majority protest. Of three possible votes, weighted according to the proportional financial obligation for the property, three affirmative votes were returned. The ballot approves the proposed assessment and the proposed inflation adjustment limit described for the parcel identified in the ballot. A resolution determining to levy assessments in the district is available for council consideration. Motion E.
Okay. Got a motion? We have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Pose. Substitution? All right. Next item.
Takes us to Section 10 Regular Agenda Action Items and Recommendations. Item 10.1, consider an urgency interim ordinance Item 10.1, consider an urgency interim ordinance imposing a moratorium on the issuance of any new permit, license, or entitlement for any new smoking lounge, smoke shop, or tobacco retailer in the city of Elk Grove.
Hey Shane, before you get started.
Yes, sir.
You know, John, I brought up the question at last meeting about the 1,000 feet, and I know there was some various discussion from people in the community and online blogs and things like that relative to that discussion. Can you clarify the issue around that?
Yeah, thank you, Vice. Sure, Vice Mayor Decker, I'd be happy to. So, in 2011, there were a series of public hearings leading up to an ordinance that was passed in late 2011. There was a lot of discussion, or at least some discussion, about whether or not to have a 1,000-foot separation requirement at the time. The time that was, that effort was led by your police chief, Bob Lennar, and the recommendation from staff ultimately was to not have the 1,000-foot separation requirement in light of the location of the various stores and shops that were in place right there. What was put in place was a 300-foot separation for smoking. You can't smoke within 300 feet of certain sensitive receptor schools, daycare, basically children-related facilities. But the 1,000-foot separation requirement that we talked about at the last meeting that was, that was discussed, that was ultimately not recommended by staff nor adopted by the council.
Okay, perfect.
Thanks.
I just wanted to clear up any misunderstandings that some people in the public may have had.
No problem.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I'm Shane Diller, the Assistant Development Services Director. This item, this evening before you, is brought back at your request after, at the last meeting, council expressed concern regarding the possible strengthening of Elk Grove's regulations related to tobacco retail. The recent introduction of vaping and smoking non-tobacco products have been identified by the Center for Disease Control as harmful, and Sacramento City and County have strengthened their recent, their regulations recently, which could potentially make Elk Grove a more attractive market to tobacco retailers and smoke shops. This evening's item will ask the council to consider an urgency interim ordinance that would place a moratorium on the issuance of new tobacco retailer licenses, new conditional use permits for smoke shops, and new conditional use permits for smoke lounges. As a little history on this item, in 2005, the council adopted its current tobacco retail license language in Chapter 4.27 of the municipal code, and then in 2011, as the city attorney was just addressing, there were tighter restrictions placed on smoking, and there was that discussion of the 1,000-foot level which was, restriction which was not adopted at the time. Also, in 2011, the council adopted the classifications of smoking lounge and smoke shop into our zoning code, and it required that a conditional use permit be required for both of those land uses. In 2013, the city council adopted changes separating our business license issuance from zoning and building code compliance in order to streamline building code, building permit, or correction, business license issuance due to cost issues and timing constraints. And then in 2018, the council prohibited smoking in or near dining areas. For a little background, the definition of tobacco retailer that we're looking at placing a moratorium on is really any person who sells or offers for any compensation tobacco, tobacco products, tobacco paraphernalia, and there's no regard to quantity for any of those items. You'll note that vaping or vape products is not included in that definition. The definitions or the classifications of smoking lounge and smoke shop, a smoke shop is basically a tobacco retailer or a business whose primary purpose is the sale of tobacco, tobacco products, paraphernalia. This definition does include vaping and vaping products, and it, it has some specific triggers and, and measurements in there as to what triggers something becoming a smoke shop versus a simple tobacco retailer. If you want to think about it simply as a smoke shop is something that is almost exclusively or very heavily, or according to this here, at least 15% or more, what you think of is primarily a business doing cigarette sales. A tobacco retailer, as we currently are applying the code, is any business that's primary business is something else, like a gas station or a liquor store, and they also happen to sell some tobacco product, but not to the point that meets the threshold that would make them a smoke shop. The smoking lounge is a business establishment where the smoking of tobacco is, is allowed on the premises, and they're known as cigar lounges or hookah bars. The definition or the classification of vape or vaping products is not included in that definition. Currently, the city has 57 of the active tobacco retail licenses, the lesser threshold of the licenses in place. When we looked at what smoke shops are currently present, we found seven total, and three of them are holding current tobacco retail licenses and were opened prior to the smoke shop, smoke lounge language being adopted in the code in 2011, which would make them likely legal non-conforming, but staff will explore that further as we continue to look at the regulations related to this topic. Category B are four shops who hold the current tobacco retail license but do not hold the conditional use permit that's required by the codes, meaning that they've opened since the 2011 timeframe. And one of the reasons why I pointed out in the timeline that we'd altered the business license ordinance to separate some of these things out is because the current practice of license issuance doesn't check for a CUP requirement when issuing the tobacco license. The tobacco retail license is a faster, more direct process, and the onus to obtain that permit, the CUP permit, is on the owner to do so. And we're in a position where enforcing the zoning code currently is not something we do proactively, so as we came across these, we have not moved forward automatically with enforcement. We're going to ask for some feedback from you in regards to how to take an approach for these businesses in, in that second category. Tobacco regulations are enforced two ways, administratively by the Code Enforcement Division of Development Services, in that we would move forward with administrative citations and license suspensions against the business itself or the property owner for violations of our tobacco ordinances. And then the police department handles criminal enforcement of tobacco violations of state law, primarily the penal and business and professions codes, and also the enforcement of, of individuals that may be violating tobacco ordinances, like buying cigarettes for minors or that type of activity. You have a green sheet presented to you on this item that gives you a little bit more background in regards to the categories of businesses we've uncovered while exploring the moratorium, and it also provides you a second alternate ordinance that was prepared since the publication of the staff report when we developed the further information on the smoke shop businesses. That second ordinance would allow you to grant staff or direct staff to grant some flexibility in regards to dealing with the existing businesses in either bringing them into compliance if they are found to otherwise be legally operating by a certain date, or to adopt the first ordinance as written, which would take a stronger approach of prohibiting any of the businesses from coming into compliance with our current ordinances, and if we pursued enforcement effectively, shutting them down for the moratorium period. Tonight's proposal, some of the nuts and bolts of it, it's a, would be to adopt the moratorium ordinance, either the presented one or the revised version. It does require a fourth, fifth vote of the council to pass. It would be in effect for 45 days, so staff would return with either an extension of the moratorium or language to put in place that would satisfy the reason for the moratorium within 45 days, most likely the extension. It would be, it would be followed by a public notice hearing, which would allow the council to then extend that moratorium an additional 10 months or 15 days. And then ultimately, we could extend another year beyond then. Staff recommends that council adopt one of the interim ordinances proposed that would place the moratorium on the tobacco retail license and the conditional use permits for both the smoke shops and the smoke lounges. I know we got into the weeds a little bit with the smoke shops that we have operating, and I want to thank the city attorney's office for their help in sorting through some of the nuances there, but we're all available for questions.
Good question.
Okay. Excellent question. Vice Mayor.
Yes. So, I had a conversation with John, and maybe you addressed this, and I didn't, didn't hear it, that what, if somebody has an existing license and they're up for renewal, what is it, what is it, what are you proposing?
We're proposing that if they are up for renewal, and this is more specifically expressed in the alternate ord, in the, the second ordinance that...
Would you like to address?
Yeah, go ahead.
All right, thank you, Vice Mayor. So, as, as proposed in the ordinance in your packet and in the revisions, if we have an existing use that has an existing license as otherwise lawfully operating, they would be allowed to renew their license. Now, that's staff's recommendation because the, the operators essentially have some form of a property interest, and we thought it was appropriate to allow an existing lawful use to continue despite the moratorium. When we learned that there were at least one facility where the license had expired, I think on February 28th, they have not come in for a renewal yet, I revised the ordinance to state, if the council so chooses, if you had a business that was lawfully operating on a certain date, we chose January 1st, 2020, but there's no magic to that, if they were lawfully operating, and they might not know about this moratorium because it's an urgency, then they would be allowed to come in and get an extension, provided that they were otherwise lawfully operating. I may have garbled that a little bit. I hope you understood. I'm happy to go through it again. The, the point of all of this would be, if you have an existing business that's operating, they get to stay. New businesses, one of the concerns is, in light of the city of Sacramento's fairly aggressive stance, you might have businesses flourishing into our city. We wanted to stop that from happening so the new businesses couldn't start up, but we didn't want to penalize existing businesses who are otherwise lawfully operating.
Sir, Shane, is there one part that you recommend over the other, personally, in your experience?
In my experience, I think that it is probably more equitable to adopt the, the stance of working with the current businesses that are operating and bringing them into compliance while keeping the, the new businesses from opening, and it helps us clean up our current landscape while putting in some of the, the roadblocks that we wanted to put in place while we looked at the, at tightening the regulations.
Vice Mayor Decker, if I can just add to my comments and, and the assistant director's comments, to just go a little bit further, there are a few businesses that don't have conditional use permits, and one of the reasons for that is when people come in and get licenses, as a standard practice, we don't check necessarily for zoning. We let people know they're obligated to comply with zoning, but we don't independently do zoning checks because there's an additional cost that can slow matters down. So what we have proposed in the revisions to the ordinance, when we realized that there were, looks like four shops, smoke shops, that don't have CUPs but would be required to have CUPs, is give them kind of a grace period. They have 180 days under the proposal to get a CUP. Now, the council doesn't have to adopt that recommendation. If you choose not to adopt that recommendation, that would mean that they are out of compliance with the zoning code.
Yeah, I think putting a burden on somebody who, who was under the premise they've done everything right and been, because you're, basically, you could have somebody who's been in business for years that would have required a zoning CUP who doesn't have one, and now all of a sudden, and, and what is that cost of a CUP nowadays?
A conditional use permit is a deposit of about $8,800, and it's a deposit, so it could go higher than that depending on the, the scope of the work that needs to be done on the item.
Yeah, personally, I'd rather see those grandfathered in and anybody new that requires it, we get a CUP on myself.
Well, they can't be grandfathered in because they're, they were not legal conforming uses by the time they started operating. They were illegal. Now, they might not have known they were illegal, they might not have realized they needed a CUP, but the grandfathering or the legal term is legal non-conforming use, but use grandfathering for short term. That means that the time that they were established lawfully, they, they appropriately existed and followed all the zoning codes and every other law. Then, at some point, the zoning code changed, as it did here in 2011, to say, well, for the type of use you are, you need a CUP. That's grandfathering. But a use that comes in after the fact, you can't grandfather that in. Now, I suppose you could revise the code to remove the CUP requirement, but it'd be very cautious about revising it or kind of spot zoning for particular businesses. If you wanted to remove the CUP altogether, you can certainly do that, but one of the reasons we have the CUP requirement is to make sure that we get a closer look at these types of businesses, given some of the impacts it may have.
So, could have they been conforming based on the zone when they opened the business, and then we changed the overlaying zone?
Well, that's what happened on what, what the director, assistant director has been calling Category A, where they were in, in conformance with the zoning code, but we changed it. So that's a legal non-conforming use. They're not penalized, they can't expand, but they can continue because they were operating legally the time they were established.
Right.
Okay.
And then the...
Does that make sense?
Yes. Then the Category Bs are four of the businesses that are not, that are after that time period that should have obtained the CUP, and in the, in the proposal we're discussing, the second option, the, the second version of the ordinance you presented in the green sheet, code enforcement would contact those businesses and give them a grace period. We're currently using the date of, of six months to come into planning and to apply for and receive their conditional use permit to then become legal. A couple of those businesses have been operating since 2012 and 2015. Two of them are more recent, more recently opened in 2019.
So then your recommendation is the, the green sheet version?
If our, if our effort is to be business-friendly and to work with cleaning up the current landscape while holding off new businesses from coming in, then yes, the, the second version, the green sheet version, would be my recommendation.
Thank you.
Okay. Question, House member?
Yeah, I had several, but I think they've been answered, and so that is that essentially we would ask that those businesses that should have had a CUP, that don't have the CUP, they have to come into compliance, or else they would be subject themselves to the moratorium, more or less.
Yes, that, that's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Any other question? Go ahead.
Yes. Mr. Shane Diller, thank you so much for pulling this together and working with the city's office on this. I do have a correction on the staff report, and that is, it's only the city of Sacramento that has put this regulation in place and not the county. The county has chosen not to take any action at this time, so that is a slight correction that I'd, I'd like for us to make note of in here.
All right, thank you.
I do want to just kind of briefly talk to my council colleagues about this, is that this gave us an opportunity, when the city of Sacramento put this in place for their city, it gave us an opportunity to kind of pull this back and look at what we have in place, but also to be able to do some cleanup language as well, because we didn't put vaping as a part of the whole tobacco regulation, right? And so, being able to kind of pull this out and Mr. Shane being able to find all of this in here and giving us the opportunity to clean this up, but also taking a look at this moratorium and looking at a way where if there are any new business, should we decide to accept any new business that comes in after this, that we do tighten our regulations a little bit more, because with Sacramento putting this in place, and we are just another exit away, you better bet that they will start looking to coming to our city here. I'm not looking to hurt the 57 businesses that we have in place right now. I'm not looking to hurt any of those small businesses. I am looking to make sure that we do some cleanup language and that we make sure that we go back and, and visit our regulations and our codes again, as we do with other things as well, too, but also gives us the opportunity to take a look at if there are any new businesses, what do we have to put in place to make sure that we are not accepting all of those other small businesses that are shutting down in Sacramento and, and coming here, right? If, if we do even, even accept them. So, I hope that we can get some support on this moratorium, the green sheet one that Mr. Shane Diller had put in place. I, I do feel like the four that are not in compliance, they just didn't know, and what I talked to our city manager about, it wasn't as if they did it and, and they knew about it, they just didn't know. So being able to go to them and, and presenting this to them and giving them the opportunity to be in compliance, I think is fair.
Okay. Councilmember Hume, and then Councilmember...
Thank you, Mayor. I just had another clarifying question. Shane, and I know you discussed, you discussed this in your presentation, can you give me the distinction of, of what is a tobacco retailer that is not a smoke shop?
So, a tobacco retailer that is not a smoke shop would be a tobacco retailer that is not acting primarily as a retailer of tobacco or tobacco paraphernalia, and that specifically is operating at 15% or more of the product they are selling as non-tobacco products. So that would be a liquor store that, or convenience store that is primarily drinks and snacks and those sorts of things, and 15% or less of their stock, or there's some specific footage requirements regarding display area that would not be, that they would be below in offering those tobacco products. Anything above that then triggers the smoke shop classification in the zoning code and would become a smoke shop, not a tobacco retailer.
Okay, so essentially, then you're telling me a tobacco retailer is anybody that sells tobacco products but at an amount less than 15%?
Correct, yes, and that would be of, of any amount. So if they sell, you know, a, if they have a rack with a single brand and single carton of cigarettes, they would be considered a tobacco retailer under our current ordinances adopted in 2005, and we would require the tobacco retail license of that activity. And then, once they get to the 15% threshold and above, they would be a smoke shop as defined by the zoning code.
And so the green sheet ordinance would accept the 57 existing businesses regardless of their status, those ones that are out of compliance would be brought into compliance or, or they would be subject?
The, the 57 are currently legal and operating with that license, and they'd be able to renew that license as it would come up during the moratorium.
Okay, so those seven, Category A, Category B, are, are in addition to the 57?
Some are, they're, they're, some are duplicate and, and some, well, they, they all have tobacco retail licenses.
Right.
Some of them are meeting that higher threshold of being considered smoke shops.
Gotcha.
So they would be able to renew their tobacco license, and they would also, under the green sheet, be able to seek a conditional use permit to conform with the zoning code requirement based on the threshold they're meeting and their product level.
And so the green sheet ordinance would apply this moratorium also to any tobacco retailer?
Yes, both, both.
Gas station, convenience store, any business whose regular operation includes the sale of tobacco products would be denied access to the city of Elk Grove.
Would be, under, under either version. Yes, under either version is required to get a tobacco license, and under either version of the, of the moratorium would be able to renew if they're current, but would not be able to obtain a new license until the moratorium was lifted.
In 45 days.
45 days is the initial period. It will likely be longer than 45 days.
And so we would have to come, you'll, you'll bring back to us some recommendations for us.
Within 45 days, we would bring back an extension of the moratorium and probably an update on maybe where we are with our review, and then beyond that, we would come back with a, an actual ordinance amending the current codes we have and any additions to, to our local ordinances that we feel are appropriate based on the direction we're getting from council.
Shane, can you give the timelines on the extensions?
The extensions of the moratoriums?
Yes.
Yes, so we're in a position where the moratorium, if adopted today by a fourth, fifth vote, would be in effect for 45 days, so we would have to come back by the second council meeting in April for an extension there.
And then how long could that extension be?
And then that extension can be for an additional 10 months and 15 days.
Okay.
And then we can extend another year beyond then if we haven't satisfied this, this issue by then, which I expect we probably would have by the, by then, but I can't commit right now.
Basically, it's two years if you needed to.
Certainly.
So, Vice Mayor, and I think there may be some questions in your minds on this as well. You don't have to extend it by 10 months and 15 days, and we've had situations where the council wanted to move quickly so as not to impact businesses, where you did a shorter extension. It's not really feasible to get all of this work done in 45 days, so it's not unusual that you would extend it to some extent, but you don't have to take the entire time if you don't want to.
I get it. And just so I understand, the moratorium on tobacco retailers would be because our current language does not include vaping? That would be the reason to deny any future licenses for the whatever period we...
It, it's one of the, one of the considerations is that currently vaping is not included in the tobacco retail license, and the cleanup there is something that's been recommended at this point. There's also, it also gives us an opportunity to review the internal processes for license issuance and for enforcement, both administrative and criminal, to make sure that we've got everything tightened the way we need there as we bring back an ordinance to amend the code.
And I think also, if we wanted to extend the distance, that could be part of that, too, right?
It could be.
Yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm, I don't have a problem with the purpose of, of amending the code, but can you tell me, or Darren, maybe you can tell me, do we have any projects in the pipeline, service stations, or anything that this might affect that's currently processing?
So I know we had a Shell station that, I'm trying to remember.
Sheldon.
Yeah, Sheldon, which...
Sheldon East Stockton.
Probably hasn't come in for their business. Probably hasn't come in for their business or their business license or their building permit.
They haven't even broke around yet.
So, um, there's an Arco AMPM. There's been several Arco AMPMs. I'm trying to remember where they're at in the process. One's off of Elk Grove Boulevard. They have an existing entitlement. There's one that had the car wash relocated. So I, you know, I don't know if the addition of a car wash would trigger that if they didn't already have their license. I'm assuming they do have their license, the one on Bond and Elk Grove Florin. But yeah, there's...
What about the Arco and Camomber?
They're already, they're already operating. The Chevron, they're in business. Yeah, they're open. So we've, we've seen a lot of additions or demos of, of rebranding of gas stations lately, so that's something to consider.
Can we amend this, Mr. Attorney, to be able to say any existing that are in at the time now are not part of this moratorium or...
So the ordinance hasn't been adopted yet, so we can change that tonight if you want to. It always gets a little tricky to try to draft language from the dice, but we can certainly help the council if that's what you want to do. I'm not entirely sure what you're asking, though. What this does is it would be a moratorium on any new business coming in. So it wouldn't have, the intent is that it wouldn't affect existing businesses. And part of the purpose of that is a concern that you might have proliferation from other communities that might come to our community. And we just wanted to kind of hit the pause button while we took a look at that. But if there's different direction the council wants to take tonight, let us know what you'd like to do, and we'll see if we can accommodate that.
So if we, if anybody's coming due for their license, is there, could we put a, some type of a letter to let them know that with that, if they don't renew and then come back at a later date, that it would be...
For existing permit, you mean?
Yes.
So our, our code provides that we notify the retailers of their license expiration coming up.
Right.
And so that's something we should be doing. Are you suggesting that we let them know of the current moratorium? I think that's not an unreasonable position. I just wanted to make sure I understand that's what you're asking.
I'm just thinking if we, because if, if they, so let's say that gas station who's under construction, if they let it lapse, then, and they come back a year from now when they're all finished, would that trigger them under the new premise, or would they be grandfathered in?
They, they'd be applying for a new license if they let the current license lapse, and under the moratorium, we would not issue them a new license at that point.
That, that is assuming the moratorium's in place in here. I don't know if it's going to be. It might not be, but if, but if it's in place.
Why we have that moratorium in place, it might be another courtesy notice to make sure that something doesn't drop through the cracks.
Yeah, I think that's reasonable. We should be able to accommodate that.
Okay.
Okay. Councilmember Sun.
Yep, thank you. Hey, John, city attorney. For the four businesses that we would require to get a, basically pay $8,000 to get a CUP, but they're already operating, do we have the ability to let them basically pay in installments to, to basically lessen the burden?
So the code doesn't allow for that. The council has discretion to direct that, if you, if you like. I'm not sure exactly which the four businesses are or whether or not that's important to the council, but the council has authority to waive or do other measures with fees. Keep in mind that it's kind of a zero-sum game. There's a cost there, and so the city would have to absorb that cost essentially, and if it's making payments and it's really just an interest-free loan, it'd be an interest charge. So if that's something that the council wants to direct, we can take that direction. But keep in mind, and I'm not suggesting that any of these businesses did this nefariously or that they intentionally didn't operate without a CUP, but keep in mind, had they followed the correct procedure, they would have incurred that cost.
Right.
Yeah, that's true.
Before they got their license.
That's correct.
Yeah.
So to some extent, they've already received the benefit, or to use the terminology, just use an interest-free loan on the city while they were operating without a CUP. And again, I'm not suggesting they did that intentionally. They might not have known, and that happens. But they had the benefit of not having to pay that cost earlier. I'm not saying it's not a cost. It certainly is to the business, but it's a cost that was essentially deferred.
Right.
Time used some money, it was well to their advantage.
Yeah, right.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Nope. Thank you. Right, at this point in time, want to open for public comment, seeing that no members of the public signed up to speak. Want to close public comment. Counsel deliberation and direction. Members?
Well, I would move the green sheet version, adopt a urgency interim ordinance imposing a moratorium on all new smoking lounges, smoke shops, and tobacco retailers, retailers within the city of Elk Grove. Sequo exempt.
Second.
Got a motion second. John, is that sufficient or... Okay.
So I would offer a substitute motion or ask the, the motioner to, to make an amendment to the motion that would exempt development projects that are currently processing.
That's what I was trying to see. Okay, that's acceptable.
Freely amendment?
Vice Mayor?
That's fine. Sounds like, sounds like there's just one, right?
Okay. All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Abstention? All right, next item.
Item 10.2, receive results of the National Community Survey.
Carrie Whitlock, Strategic Planning and Innovation Program Manager for the city. So the National Community Survey has been conducted every other year in Elk Grove since 2009. The results of this survey are used to determine community needs, to support budget development, to measure progress, and to help improve service delivery. The survey was mailed to 2,900 randomly selected households in the, in the city, and we received 494 responses during a seven-week period in October and November 2019. Following the random sample period ending, the city posted a link to the survey on its website and allowed any resident to complete the survey. This opt-in portion was available for two weeks and resulted in 404 responses. The results of the opt-in portion of the survey are not included in the data I'm going to present here, so as not to introduce bias into the random sample survey, but they are included in a separate report that is available. The survey has a number of standard questions that are used across all jurisdictions that utilize the NCS to allow for comparisons with other areas. The city also included several custom questions for 2019 related to active transportation in the city, the use of trails and bikeways and barriers to increasing pedestrian and bicycle travel. An open and good-ended question was also asked about what respondents believed is the most critical challenge facing the city over the next five years. The survey measures a community's livability through questions around eight facets related to community quality. As in previous years of the survey, respondents identified safety and the economy as priorities for the next two years. In addition, mobility was also identified as a key priority for the first time. In terms of mobility, overall ease of traffic increased from 57 to 63% between 2017 and 2019. So this means that 63% of respondents' rated ease of travel is either excellent or good. In addition, 70% of respondents rated the availability of paths and walking trails as excellent or good, an increase from 59% in the first survey the city conducted in 2009. Also, fewer respondents rated ease, while fewer respondents rated ease of travel by public transportation is excellent or good, more respondents rated ease of travel by bicycle in this category. A large number of respondents also reported wanting to bicycle more often at 67%, but many identified concerns about being struck by vehicle traffic and the amount and connectivity of trails as barriers to being able to do so. So safety and the economy were the other two priority, priority areas identified by respondents. In terms of safety, overall 90% of respondents reported feeling safe in their neighborhood, and 75% reported feeling safe overall in Elk Grove. This is up from 64% two years ago. Related to the economy, nearly 70% of respondents rated the overall economy of the city as excellent or good, and 58% rated the quality of businesses and service, service establishments in Elk Grove as excellent or good. Since the survey is conducted every other year, looking at data across multiple years is helpful in identifying trends. So roughly eight in 10 respondents gave excellent or good ratings to Elk Grove as a place to live, to the overall appearance of the city, and plan to remain in Elk Grove for the next five years. The responses for these three areas have remained within a few percentage points over the years the survey has been conducted. Similarly, high numbers of respondents said they would recommend living in Elk Grove to others and Elk Grove as a place to raise children. These two questions have seen significant increases over the years. In addition, the positive responses to air quality in Elk Grove, to the city as a place to retire, to the city welcoming resident involvement, the opportunity to attend cultural arts and music activities, and employment opportunities have increased, have all increased by more than 10% since the first, survey first started. One aspect which has decreased is the availability of affordable quality housing. There is a lot more detail and data available in the full survey results, which are available on the city website, and I am available for any questions.
Vice Mayor?
I'm just curious, is, is there a, with the company that did this, is there comparative to other cities?
So there were, yeah, they did provide us full comparisons in the results, the reports that they provided have those. For the most part, we were similar to other jurisdictions. We were compared both nationally and to other similar size cities within California.
And, and the scores pretty much were very similar?
Were similar to all other jurisdictions, yep.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? No? Excellent. Thank you. Right, this time, want to open for public comment, seeing that no members of the public signed up to speak. Want to close public comment. Counsel deliberation and direction. Receiving file? We good with that?
Receiving file.
All right. Next item.
Item 10.3, consider an ordinance amending Elk Grove Municipal Code, Chapter 10.48, Speed Zones, to establish speed limits on various roads in the city.
Hello, Mr. Mayor, Counsel. I'm Ryan Chapman of the Public Works Department, and I'm here to present the item regarding establishing speeds, limits on various routes in the city. So to begin with, state law prescribes how we establish speed limits and requires that they be supported by an engineering and traffic study, and the study must follow Caltrans requirements. The engineering traffic study is measure the speeds on the road during clear and sunny days, uncongested conditions, and is looking to establish what the 85th percentile speed is, the speed that 85% of the traffic on the road is traveling at, and that becomes the basis of the study. From there, it's typically rounded off to the nearest 5 mile an hour increment, but there are two options to lower it. The first one, it can be reduced by 5 miles an hour for a condition that's not readily apparent to the driver. So if the speed limit was, or the 85th percentile speed was at 49 miles an hour, it would round off to 50 and then be reduced to 45. The other option is the vehicle code allows for it to be rounded down to the nearest 5 mile an hour increment, so that 49 instead of being rounded up to 50 would just be rounded down to 45. And this is required in order to allow the use of radar and lidar for the enforcement of the speed zone. So in the city, these speed surveys must be reevaluated every five years, and in 2020 we have 41 speed zones that are set to expire. 31 of these have, can be extended for five years because there have been no significant changes on the roadway. There's no change in the roadway widths, roadway volumes, or adjacent development. Four of them have new traffic studies, ENTSSs, that support the current speed limit that's been adopted by ordinance. Five of them have new ENTSSs that would require changing the speed limit. One of them, we have not been able to measure yet at Civic Center, and due to construction activities on the road, we will have to come back and evaluate it at a later time. It is currently set to expire in August, and staff is recommending one new speed zone on Black Swan Drive. So of the ones that staff is recommending change the speed limit, the first one is Big Horn Boulevard between Outroad Boulevard and White Lock. It's currently posted at 40. The proposed speed limit would be an increase of 5 miles to 45. Black Swan, which I discussed, currently doesn't have a speed limit, and we'd be recommending from Outroad Boulevard to Red Spruce, establishing a 30 mile an hour speed limit. Bruceville between Bilby, Bilby and Outroad Boulevard, existing speed limit is 40, and we're recommending an increase to 45. And then Power Inn from Sheldon to Geneva Point, currently posted at 30, and the proposed increase would be to 40. White Lock Parkway between, well, the entire White Lock Parkway is currently 35, and the recommended increase would be to 45. In all of these cases, the speed limit was either rounded down or there was a deduction made to reduce it. Staff's recommendation is to introduce and waive the full reading of the attached ordinance and establish speed limits on various routes in the city. That ends my presentation. I'm available for questions.
Councilmember Hume?
Thank you, Mayor. Ryan, the, on Black Swan Way, is the reason that the new speed zone stops at Red Spruce rather than continuing on down to Main Line because there's an established speed zone in front of Al Gates Park?
Um, well, it's, at that point, it becomes a residential district, and we meet the density criteria as to have it posted at 25.
Because there are houses facing on to Black Swan?
Correct, because there's houses directly facing them, and we have the density required under the vehicle code.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. No other questions?
I have a question, Mr. Mayor.
Good. Councilmember Hume?
Mr. Chapman, so I, you know, I spoke to our city manager this morning about this, and my concern is that on White Lock Parkway, there are several, there's a middle school, there's a high school, there's Barstool and we park, and it's also the same street in which several months ago we had community members come out because there was an accident. And I know we're putting a, a street light on there, but my concern is that while it is at 35 miles per hour right now, nobody really goes 35. Now, when we change it to 45, people are going to increase their speed limit a little bit more than that. And from Franklin all the way down to Big Horn off of White Lock Parkway, you not only have the high school, the middle school, the, the walking path, but also consumeness as well, too. And the new Singin' Car Park that is going to be put in place, will have a lot of families, children, walking along that area. And if somebody is driving 45, say 48 miles per hour, and if you needed to stop, and maybe Chief, you might know more how this can affect, but being able to stop at that, that speed limit and knowing that that's going to be a busy street, having new drivers with both of those high schools there, is that something we can take into consideration? Or is that not even considered at all? And, and my fear also is that if we have to do this every five years, that in another five years, when we do this survey again, we're going to increase it to five more miles, it's going to almost look like we're on the freeway on White Lock Parkway.
So there's not a lot of option to reduce it further than what I've proposed, or there is no option to reduce it further. When the schools are in session, the 25 mile an hour speed limits would be in effect and enforceable. So when children are present in front or near those schools, that would be the case. But unfortunately, the way this is set up, it's based off the prevailing speed, and we're really restricted to only being able to reduce it by that 5 miles an hour.
Okay.
Okay. No other questions?
Yeah.
Vice Mayor?
Ryan, looking, you did raise these, the minimum that you could raise them, right? You could have rounded, you rounded down on all of them, you didn't round up.
Correct.
So I think, I mean, it was the most conservative you could be based on the law, correct?
Yes.
Yeah, I was hoping there was a way around that. I drive that road every day. I will drive it home tonight.
Talk to Cooper. It's a legislative issue. Speed dial.
All right. Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you, Ryan.
Thank you.
At this point, want to open for public comment, seeing no members of the public signed up to speak. Want to close public comment. Counsel deliberation and direction.
Motion, introduce and waive the full reading by substitution title only, an ordinance amending the Elk Grove Municipal Code, Chapter 10.48, Speed Zones, to establish a speed limit on various roads throughout the city.
Second.
Okay, you got a motion second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Close. Abstention. Next item.
Item 10. 10.4, receive an annual report on city surplus lands and consider a resolution affirming prior declarations of surplus lands, declaring certain other land surplus, and authorizing the city manager to send notices of availability as to the surplus lands.
Good evening, Mayor, Counsel. Christopher Jordan.
Christopher Jordan. This is, as the clerk mentioned, your annual report on surplus lands. This is a new requirement we have. As you may be aware, state law does provide the process for surplusing lands that are owned by the city, no longer of use for the city. A number of amendments were made in 2019 through Assembly Bill 1486, which kick in as of the first of this year. So staff is going through and looking at sites that we, excuse me, own, and identifying recommendations to you, and there are some recommendations included this evening for your potential action. Some of the amendments, and we'll highlight these throughout the presentation, some of the key ones that occurred this year. Again, this annual report on surplus lands, and you'll see this come back at your next meeting with the general plan annual report, there's a requirement that it be included in there as well. The intent here is to provide improved noticing of lands to facilitate development of affordable housing around the state. The author really identified that this, they saw this as an opportunity to get lands that were available for development that cities and counties and other local agencies weren't using, and be able to get that in the hands of developers principally for residential projects. There are some new definitions in the law, which we're continuing to grapple with. One of those deals with this idea of agency use, and particularly plans that are not, to be not used for an agency use. And we'll talk about those in a minute, that they have to be declared surplus, or need to ultimately be declared surplus. The timing of that declaration is up to the local agency. So this idea of agency use, as it's defined in the new legislation, is land that is used or planned to be used for agency's work or operation. And the examples that are included, but not necessarily limited to, are things like water treatment plants, parks, detention basins, or other agency use. So for instance, our Civic Center District 56 complex would be in agency use. This complex, the Corporation Yard, libraries, those sorts of things, all fall within the realm of agency use. But there are expressed exclusions, which include commercial or industrial uses that are of nongovernmental nature. So for instance, out at District 56, there's the new cafe, but it's part of the larger complex. That's included, that would not fall under this definition necessarily of non-agency use. If an agency decides to dispose of land to finance a project, that disposition must go through the surplus lands act. There's no out clause for anything we'd be trying to do relative to a financing process. There are new noticing requirements, so we have to notice these lands as available to other public agencies. This would be things like Elk Grove Unified, as well as the CSD. I think, I believe County Parks also falls in the definition as well. We also have to now provide notice to developers that are registered with the state, with Housing Community Development Department. From the date of notice, developers and the other state agencies, local agencies, are given 60 days to express interest in the property. If someone does express interest, the law provides they get a minimum of 90 days of good faith negotiation with the city in order to come to terms for the acquisition of that property. If there's no interest within 60 days, or the negotiations fail after 90 days, the city does have the ability to negotiate with any other developers or other interested parties. But the intent is, again, to give priority to potential housing development. In terms of limits, the new law expresses, again, gives us preference for residential uses, particularly affordable housing. With certain exceptions, the city cannot disallow residential site as a condition of disposal, so we cannot put terms on the transfer, we can't put a deed restriction in place. But nothing in here prohibits local land use restrictions. So for instance, if we had a piece of property that was, say, zoned office, we weren't really interested in seeing residential occur there, while we could not condition the sale, we could not put a deed restriction on the sale itself, we are under no obligation to do a general plan amendment or rezone to move it into residential if someone wanted to buy it for residential purposes. So our hope is obviously that people would then know going into it, this is the zoning on the property, you may want to acquire it for a residential purpose, but the city's under no obligation to actually approve that project, or approve the legislative acts in order to approve that project. There are also exemptions for surplus property that's going to residential, or actually, I'm sorry, if the project is going to residential, and there's more than 10 units being developed, the developer is obligated to do at least 15% of those units being, or 50% of the project to be affordable. So again, it gets back to the intent of the legislation. And finally, in terms of reporting listing, again, there's this annual report, and then the general plan annual report will include this information as well. That report, as well as notification, goes to the state, and they put it into a big database. There are hundreds of developers up and down the state now that are registered to get that list, and then we have to send it directly to them. So if you move forward this evening with this, with identifying these surplus sites, staff has the notices ready to go out this week. We want to start by reaffirming existing sites that were declared surplus previously. The last time we've done this was in 2012. There are five sites, which are up here on the screen, and detailed out in your staff report. These all relate to prior transportation or roadway improvement projects that were, have been completed. Site one on this map is at the corner of Bond and Grant Line, it was part of the Bond Road realignment many years ago. And the other sites, sites two through five on this exhibit, relate to the interchange improvement at Sheldon and 99. So we're just looking for you to reaffirm these, and then we will get the notices out in conformance with the new law. The city does own a multitude of other sites around the city. Some of those may come back for consideration at a future date, but two sites we wanted to highlight this evening and seek direction on are sites A and B on this exhibit, and I'll go through them in more detail shortly. The first one is an additional site at the Sheldon 99 Interchange Project, that's Site A. And Site B is the multi-sport complex site. So look into each of these, and we'll explain why we're listing them here. First, again, the Sheldon Road Site, 8340 Sheldon Road, this was part of the interchange improvements, those have been completed, and so this just ought to be added to the list. The second site, Site B, 10251 Grant Line Road, as you're aware, this is part of the multi-sport complex site. We are going through the process of annexing it now. The Sphere of Influence Amendment was approved by the Local Agency Formation Commissioner, LAFCO, in May of last year. We are working on meeting all the terms and conditions of that SOI approval. These include master plan for water sewer, drainage, and transportation. That all wraps up into a plan for service, along with the agreement with Sacramento County and the Habitat Conservation Plan, Joint Powers Authority, all of that will come together and provide for the application of LAFCO for the annexation. So we continue to work on that. We do understand, though, that at your prior council meeting back in September of 2015, there were concerns with the finance plan that was presented. As part of that, staff in the environmental impact report for the SOI and ultimate construction facility included not just the full sports complex that you saw at that time, but also a potential project alternative, which had approximately 50 acre, 50% of the site, about 50 acres identified for the sports complex, and the balance of the site to be in about 50 acres or 50% of the site identified for potential industrial use. The concept there being, potentially, we could sell off a portion of the site, use the proceeds from that to then finance construction on the balance of the site. If that's something that we want to entertain, we'd obviously want to get going on that at a certain point, and obviously it would then inform some of the analysis that goes into meeting the terms and conditions. So at this point, staff is recommending declaring the site a surplus, which will allow us to market a portion of the site to potential uses while still allowing the development of the sports complex to move forward. So none of this cancels out the sports complex project, that's still something we continue to work on, but it provides options in terms of the financing going forward. And simply because of the new law is why we're needing to bring this to you at this time. So again, the recommendation is adopt the resolution you have with the prior reaffirmation of the five sites, as well as the additional two that are recommended this evening, and directing staff to complete the required noticing. concludes the presentation. Staff's available to answer questions.
Any questions? No questions? All right.
Great, thank you.
At this time, want to open for public comment, seeing that no members of the public have signed up to speak, want to close public comment. Counsel deliberation and direction.
Move staff's recommendation.
Got a motion second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstention? All right, that is it. Let's go ahead and adjourn this meeting at 8:14 PM. Thank you, everyone.